Log out, log back in.
Don't log out.
No, we don't have to log out.
Nope.
All right.
So everything.
All right.
Yes, you should. I'll work. Okay. He's got five minutes. Good. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our July 27th Portsmouth Town Council meeting. Any question in our virtual meetings? For those of you that are at home, calling in by phone, star six will mute unmute your phone. Star nine will indicate you have a question. And for those of you on your browser, there is an icon to click on to get our attention. Have a question. For those of you that are participating either from home, on the phone, or called upon, please state your name, address for our clerk. And that will, that's our ground rules for the, for the meeting. If we could all now stand for our pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women. It's a very important way.
Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, divisible, and justice for all.
Hey, good evening again, everyone. Before we get started, we just go through our little call for council.
Ms. Jufusa?
Present.
Abbott?
Present.
Hamilton?
Here.
Present.
Kelly?
Present.
Dr. I D R?
That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Ryan?
I'm here. Am I, does that mean I'm an engineer now?
Is that me, I'm an astronaut?
Good luck.
Present. All right, it's the heat. I think it's the heat.
Yes.
I think it's the heat. Okay. Just give me one second here. Okay. Thank you all again. Prior to our regular meeting tonight, we did have an executive session regarding potential litigation and collective bargaining. Relating to potential litigation, and it was approved seven to zero regarding collective bargaining. No votes were taken. I'd also like to take this opportunity to put out a public service announcement here for the school department. For those of you that are listening in, the school department has sent out a survey, a transportation survey. It should have been emailed to everyone within the district. That survey, I believe, tomorrow evening. So I encourage you all to fill out that survey if you have it regarding the transportation needs. Additionally, this Thursday, the 30th, there is a virtual forum regarding the reopening scenarios from the school department. That's a good opportunity to see what's going on with the school department on the 30th. So I encourage all of you to participate if you're in. If we can now move on to our consent agenda.
Mr. President? I move on consent agenda.
Seconded.
Motion. And a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Patson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. I D R?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. We will move on to sitting against the Board of License Commissioners. You have the first items are daily liquor license, class F1 Island Park Preservation Society, 21 Gate Street, or fundraiser at 706 Park Ave on September 6th. Oh.
Move to approve both the daily liquor license for Island Park Preservation Society on September 6th, 2020, and also on August 23rd, 2020. I guess 20, August 23rd should have come first.
Seconded.
Kelly, was that you?
That was, I think it was Linda and I.
It's Andrews, that's fine.
All right. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Patson?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Uh.
Aye.
Excited to talk one night. Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. I D R?
Aye. Not a doctor.
No, sorry.
Sorry, Kevin. It was fun though, wasn't it?
I got a prescription. I'm good. All right, moving on. Yeah, we, we also have a particular license and a holiday license, both new for Grasco Operating One LLC, doing business as Neon Marketplace.
Move to approve both the Victor's license and the holiday license.
Mark Ryan, second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Patson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. I D R?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have our challenge to adjourn. Sorry, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from the Board of License Commissioners.
Seconded, Mark Ryan.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. I D R?
Aye. The motion passes seven to zero. Oh. Now, we have our, moving on to our town council minutes from June 10th.
Move to approve is presented.
Is that just the 10th or are we doing all three?
I was hoping to do all three. And, and July 20th. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Dr. Ryan?
Okay.
Yeah.
Second.
Linda is second to approve all three minutes.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Patson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. I D R?
Aye. Passes seven to zero. Next, we have tax voucher, 2020-727-01 to 2020-0727-15.
Move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Patson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. I D R?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, on to our general administrator's report. Ladies and gentlemen, the president of the town council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to COVID, just a few updates. Portsmouth Playgrounders will reopen on August 1st. And the Portsmouth Department of Public Works will sanitize the playground equipment on a regular basis. And signs will be posted reminding patrons to adhere to the COVID guidelines, i.e. maintaining proper social distancing, use of hand sanitizer, staying in until you feel sick, avoiding crowds, seeking an alternate playground if there is a large group present, and wearing face masks as appropriate. Additionally, the Portsmouth Emergency Food Bank has relocated in order to allow St. Barnes to return their facilities to normal use. So the St. John's Lodge, number one of Freemasons, has offered the town use of their facility at A1 Sprague Street for the food bank. So starting on Wednesday, this Wednesday, July 29th, the food bank will be open from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. Wednesdays and Fridays for food distribution and to accept donations. People in need or people wishing to donate food may come to the parking lot and follow the signs. And more information can be found on our website. Lastly, the, with respect to the COVID update, the Portsmouth Library is now open to the public. Browsing is allowed, but patrons are requested to limit their business to 30 minutes. Masks are required and social distancing must be maintained. There are seven public access computers, which are available for use by appointment or on a spaced basis. Booknuk is open for purchases, but donations are not being accepted at this time. And our hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 9 to 5, and Tuesday, Thursday from 9 to 6. Please contact the library if you have need for their permission. With respect to Aquapalooza, the unofficial Aquapalooza event held annually in Potter Cove at Prudence Island was this past Saturday. There was particular attention on this year's event due to pandemic concerns. Our strategy was to encourage compliance with safe voting rules and regulations while also encouraging compliance with COVID guidelines. Portsmouth, and particularly the Portsmouth Police Department, was able to organize a strong enforcement presence and monitor the cove for overcrowding. The governor's office gave us latitude to determine the safe number of people and votes allowed in the cove. In all, we had seven enforcement votes on scene. I'd like to thank the U.S. Coast Guard, Rhode Island State Police, DEM, and Bristol for helping us ensure public safety during this event. Our officers were on the water till approximately 9 a.m. center. The number of voters who attended this year was much less than previous years. And the officers believe that the large law enforcement presence this year served as a deterrent to what normally goes on. While the cove never had to be officially shut down due to attendance, voters began to set up outside the cove in open waters, which did present a challenge for enforcement. Jeff skis were particularly a problem this year as they estimated a number of two, approximately 150 of them throughout the day. The harbor master reported, for the most part, that voters were respectful and were accepting of restrictions due to COVID-19. There was one arrest for voting under the influence, which was handled by DEM. And there was a separate event in which one person sustained an apparent broken leg. There was also one vote that was beached on a sandbar during low tide. It's my pleasure to report the receipt of a Rhode Island Senate grant to Portsmouth, the amount of $600. This grant will be used in purchasing Wi-Fi enabled computer tablet for use by the fire marshal during field inspections. And lastly, on Wednesday, our emergency management director, Ray Perry, will lead an interactive online forum to discuss personal preparedness for individuals and families. This forum is being sponsored by the Commonwealth Point Preparedness Committee, and all Portsmouth residents and employees are invited to attend. I would encourage people to call 874-6135. That's 874-6135. Or contact Ray Perry for more information. And we'll publish this information on our website as well. And then, Mr. President, just a reminder, August 10th is a Rhode Island holiday and SS Town offices will be closed. So the next hall meeting will be August 11th. I report, Mr. President. Thanks, Ray. On to resignations and appointments. First item is the reappointment to the Aquatic Island Planning Commission.
Move to reappoint Mr. Andrews.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Patson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. I D R?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And next, we have the appointments to the housing authority. Ronald.
Move to approve Mr. Harnus. I apologize, but I'm probably messing up his name.
Have a motion and second.
That's her, she's the second.
Len. Len Patson.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Patson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. I D, uh, Dr. Ryan? You could be a doctor. And the second, yeah, my eyes keep switching. I'm like checking out.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all.
Do we look that much alike?
Must be the bow ties.
Finally, an answer.
Okay. Onto whole business. First item on our whole business is the requirements report. You have some new information here that's been presented. Yeah. Jim's office. Or, and I think they're both. And Dana?
Yeah. Not sure, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, well, we've got, we're gonna, we've got both of you on and unmuted.
Fantastic. Okay. So is someone gonna pull up the slides and adjust those for me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Get a second.
Now I see all of your faces. I don't know, actually, can you see mine? I can't tell if my camera is on or not.
Uh, you don't have your, we have, unless you may have.
Unless you're sitting in a very dark room, we can see you.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not letting me turn the, the camera on for some reason, so I apologize. Although I've been told very frequently I have a face for radio, so maybe this will be better.
Can everyone hear me as well? While you're pulling up the information, I thought it would be good to check.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, perfect. Yeah. So we might just wanna go into the actual slide, you know, actually start the presentation. It'll make the slides a little bit bigger. Some of the font is a little small to read when it's in, in like this. So if you wanna like click the start pre, yeah, or you can hit start presentation and we can kinda just tell you to advance the slides from there, I suppose.
Down at the bottom, we'll be screen.
All right, so I mean, while, while we're doing this, I'll, I guess I'll get started here. So, good evening. Thanks for inviting us back to discuss the town's plan and recent market performance. My name is Jason Gentile. I'm a certified financial planner and institutional advisor for Symmetry Partners. Co-presenting with me today is Dana Dioria, Symmetry Partners Managing Director and Portfolio Manager. We're looking at the agenda slide today, so obviously, we're going to be talking about the town's performance. We definitely wanna talk about fees as that was a question that came up in the last, I'm featured in it. We're gonna give a, a market review. Oh, here we go. We'll give a market review to hopefully give some additional context as to what's been happening in the portfolio as well as around the different asset classes in which we navigate. And then the last, oh, here we go.
Hold on one second, Jason.
You're, you're in presenter view on this screen. You just gotta turn off presenter view and then we'll be able to see the slides.
Jason, it might be better to just let them.
There, that.
So we could pick out, we could see the side there. That's fine. That's fine.
So we'll, we'll review recent market performance to give some context into the town's performance. And additionally, you know, if there is time permitting, give some reviews and key metrics for the town and some next steps for the plan. I'm not sure how many folks are attending today who might not be familiar with Symmetry Partners, but we are a registered investment advisory firm located in Glastonbury, Connecticut. Founded over 20 years ago, we manage over $8 billion in client assets. Our investment philosophy is that we have a foundation of over 60 years of academic research into the dynamics of financial markets and investor behavior. We believe markets are highly efficient and our portfolios are engineered to be extremely diversified, offering exposure to thousands of stock bonds across the globe. We implement academically derived factors that have been shown to deliver enhanced returns over time. And our portfolios feature such companies as Dimensional Fund Advisors, Vanguard, and AQR with a focus on controlling risks and taxes. So if we go to the next slide. So here's where the font gets a little small, but, so I think it's important to actually start with our calendar year review. Cause this is how most individuals review and think of investments. We think of, how did we do? Or how did the stock market do within the calendar year context? And the difference between calendar year and your fiscal year will also shed some light on how the sequence of returns impacts performance numbers. For those of you who might not be familiar, the town's plan is managed to a 65% equity ratio and a 35% fixed income. Roughly 38% of the total portfolio is allocated to U.S. stocks, 22% to international and emerging stocks, about 5% to global real estate, with the remaining 35% diversified across global fixed income. So, you know, as we start to look at this particular slide, you'll notice that the calendar years are all listed at the top of the columns and the allocation is listed to the far left. We've also included a few benchmarks at the bottom of the page for each, each of those calendar years as was requested a while back by the plan. So if we look at the second to last column, which is 2019, that particular calendar year, you notice, is up 17.37%. Now, 2019 was a, an exceptional year in the stock market. It was a year where almost all asset classes were up and most investors did really well. You know, as we start to think about within the confines of that calendar year and looking at it quarterly, first quarter of 2019 was very strong, up over 8%. The second quarter continued that strength at over 2.5%. The third quarter was up about three quarters of a percent. And the fourth quarter was surprisingly strong at just over 5%. Now, I think it's important to remember here that the last two quarters of that calendar year were actually the first two, those of the fiscal year, which we're about to review. You can kinda think about that contextually as the, the beginning of your fiscal year was, was fairly clean. The challenge within this particular fiscal year was the, the third quarter, the start of 2020, where we saw a negative, nearly 17% decline, 16.94% at one quarter. So if we go to the next slide, this is actually where we start to look at the fiscal year. Now, this slide is aligned just as the other one was. Yours on top and, and left. And you'll notice that this current fiscal year was actually 1.61%. Now, as you're all well aware, markets were hit hard by the impact of the coronavirus. As I just mentioned, the, the third quarter of the fiscal year, January, March was down 17%. There was a strong bounce back in the ensuing quarter of almost 12%, 11.91%. But unfortunately, it was not enough to restore that damage that was done by COVID during that one particular quarter of, of this fiscal year. So we, within the confines of this fiscal year, we had three very good quarters and obviously one very challenging quarter. It was challenging for everybody, not just financial markets. But unfortunately, the performance of the fiscal year was negative 1.61%. Now, I'm gonna pause here cause I wanna let Dana give some context about that. I know, like technically, the fees are next on our agenda, but I think kinda discussing the performance makes more sense and we can circle back to the fees momentarily. So I'll pause really quickly if anybody's got any questions or if they missed anything that I just said. But I allow Dana to give some context as to what happened over this past fiscal year.
Okay, great, thank you, Jason. So if no one has questions about the specifics of the performance, what I was gonna talk about is just stock performance in general. So I think if we go all the way to slide eight, and I, I don't know if we got the last version of our slides in there. I'll be able to tell in a minute, just looking on the side there. I'm not sure if we saw them all. But that's okay, I have them myself, I can speak to it. So it should be the next slide after this one. Okay, so yeah, I think we, we missed one slide, but we can speak to this and I'll, I'll discuss some of the more current returns. So really, to understand the investment that you're in, we think there are two dimensions that are really worth focusing on. What is the geographic dimension? Which is, what is the performance by large asset class that's going on in the market? And how is that in turn impacting on your portfolio? And then the second dimension is factors, which really, in a nutshell, means what are the exposures in terms of return enhancements that we're looking to achieve? And how are those performing? So we'll start with global markets and large asset classes. If you were looking at a slide for the second quarter of this year and looking at these same sets of breakdowns, U.S. stocks, international stocks, emerging stocks, first of all, in the second quarter, what you would see is that everything was up dramatically. If you would looked at the first quarter, everything was down dramatically. So no surprise with any of that. You had a big drop in U.S. international and emerging market equities. What we have seen, though, of course, is that they've come back dramatically. Bonds markets are up for the quarter as well. In a nutshell, on fixed income. Credit risk was, anything with credit risk kinda took a hit in the first quarter. Credit risk came back in the same way that equities came back in the second quarter. So very much matching kind of the experience of the plan. What you're seeing in front of you is a longer term view. This is the 2000 to 2020 period. What we're experiencing on a, on a global asset class basis in the last several years is outperformance of U.S. markets versus ex-U.S. markets. So again, this is background to, to talk to this slide. If you are looking at the last 10 years of performance, and, and certainly that has only been even more the case so in this year-to-date COVID period, you would see outperformance of U.S. stocks. What we see if we look at a longer term perspective is more of a mixed picture. So it's important for students to kinda get across because the first thing that kind of differentiates your portfolio or, and drives returns in your portfolio or and drives returns in your portfolio is that we take a global approach. We have US stocks, international developed stocks, and emerging market stocks. So when you're looking at different benchmarks of performance, what you're seeing over this current period and the shorter run history is outperformance of US stocks. What you see over a longer period, including the period that we're in, if we if we meld them all together, we 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 recognize that US stocks and and international stocks have traded dominance. And so, you know, US stocks over the longer period are slightly down, international stocks slightly up and emerging doing pretty well. Of course, this is, you know, a longer period that we're looking at. So let's go to the next slide and just delve into a little more of that. If you look here, the MSCI, so the the kind of bluish gray line is the MSCI USA Index. This is the quote-unquote 2000 to 2009 lost decade period. So if you have the US market, is that dark blue line? World without the US market, so international and emerging stocks, or excuse me, international developed stocks is the world XUS, that's the light gray. Then dark green is emerging markets and the ACQIMI, the light green, is global markets, a mix of all of them. So you can see that during the lost decade, you know, if you if you see the starting US stocks kind of ended lower than where they began for that decade. But a global posture enabled you to still finish that decade with a positive return. Go ahead, hit the next slide. Thank you. Okay, what we've seen in the last 10 years is a complete reversal of that. So US stocks have traded into dominance, and this is not unusual. When you look back through history, markets are cyclical and you do see periods of trading dominance. What's difficult about markets is timing those periods, knowing when one period is kind of going to switch over to another. But what we've seen here is the dominance of US stocks, and we're going to talk in a few minutes just about which stocks in particular kind of driving a lot of that return. But US markets certainly dominating on a global basis, dark blue, much higher. And emerging markets actually is the one that's a little lower, although not in this decade actually negative. So we haven't seen negative. Next slide. And this is the full period for you to see, 2000 to 2020. So I think for the interest of time, why don't we skip forward a few slides to now the second piece of this, the factors of return? Yep. Okay, so what is driving the symmetry performance relative to the benchmarks? Well, if you're looking at symmetry versus a global benchmark, then the difference in symmetry from a global asset class perspective in your investments is we have a little bit of an overweight to US that's helped us over the last several years. We have an overweight to emerging markets, that hasn't helped as much. But the real differentiator from a symmetry, you know, the investment that Portsmouth has, and, you know, say, a market cap weighted benchmark is our factors, right? So this is the active management portion, if you will, of the portfolio where we're saying, okay, what what are we bringing in terms of what we think academic evidence has told us is a smart way to invest? And these various factors represent those exposures that we're bringing. So value means low price. We favor low price stocks over high price stocks. Size means smaller companies. We overweight, just as with value, we overweight smaller companies relative to their market cap. It doesn't mean by any stretch that we only own small cap companies, of course, right? In fact, that's not the case at all. And certainly, you know, that would not be in keeping with the asset allocation of this plan. But what we're saying is relative to a straight market cap weight, you have a greater emphasis on small cap stocks than the market cap weight does. Momentum means stocks that have performed well recently tend to continue to perform well. Quality is high profitability type stocks. And minimum volatility are stocks that have lower standard deviations in general than the market. So what we've seen, and and the key point is that size and value are the largest factors in the portfolio. That's sort of the dominance, if they'd be sort of the lead actors and the momentum, quality, and minimum volatility are kind of supporting actors. And what we've seen is that value has underperformed growth. And particularly in the last 10 years, both small and value, the small value types of stocks, which we overweight in the portfolio because long run academic evidence suggests that these types of stocks do outperform over time. In the recent period, in the last several years, they have been, it has been demonstrated that they are not outperforming and large growth stocks have dominated. And this is why you're seeing the performance that you're seeing. And of course, underperformance to market cap weighted benchmarks. Market cap weighted benchmarks, of course, are weighting everything by price, right? Price times shares outstanding. And so the higher priced stocks, these large growth stocks have become larger and larger in this index, and they've been the ones that have been doing, having the best performance. So if we want to hit the next slide. Actually, you can keep going. This slide is, I think, pretty straightforward. It just reiterates the point that these different factors trade, trade in performance. Much, much like in the geographic, these these things tend to be cyclical, right? Small value stocks versus large growth stocks, they tend to have periods of outperformance and underperformance relative to each other. We've seen a long period of outperformance of large growth on a cumulative basis at this point. Of course, it's not, it's not monolithic, right? It's not that you didn't see any outperformance. For example, value did well in 2016. But taken together, the last several years have not been good for value. In fact, what we've seen is that low price stocks, the ratio of price to book value for low price stocks versus high price stocks has increased dramatically to the point where you saw end of last year, a lot of folks saying, hey, it's time to move more into value because the ratios, the valuation ratios rep, you know, present a good case for that. And of course, what ended up happening was COVID, and COVID actually exacerbated the existing situation. And so now we're in a situation where large growth has has really kind of expanded relative to small value. So what you see in both of these, these are rolling one-year and rolling 10-year annualized returns. You see that in both cases, whether it's rolling one or 10-year periods, they, value and growth trade dominance, but the blue dotted line is telling you what the average is for for value. So what that's saying is, on average, value stocks outperform growth stocks. But you have, you have these trading and dominance. And what we're seeing right now, if you look at the 10-year graph to the far right, a strong dominance in in large growth. I want to pause now. I've gone through a lot of information before I hit the next couple of slides. Are there any questions on what I've discussed so far?
Yeah, this is Linda Ujifusa. Thank you for coming back with information. My fundamental question is, is it seems like in the last calendar year, we lost 7%. And it feels like the stock market has been going up during that time, and I realize that we're not the same as private investors, but can you explain why we lost 7% when the market was basically going up so much over that period?
Well, so this, this kind of goes to what we're talking about here. So when we talk about what is the market? If you're talking about the US market cap weight, that has done well versus pretty much, if you're bringing global markets into it, they haven't performed so well. So I actually think we have a couple of slides to kind of address that. Why don't we move forward?
Actually, Dana, can I just interject for one second?
Sure, yep.
So I mean, I guess one fundamental piece of information there, when you're looking at the calendar year performance, is that really from 11 to 331, the portfolio started down 17%, right? So the first quarter of this calendar year was a struggle. And in order to get back to where you were, you need an actual bigger return to get back to that point. So, you know, I think it's important to understand that the first quarter of this year kind of started the whole second year, I mean, the second quarter of this year, we certainly out of it a bit and have continued to do so through the month of, almost all of July, up another 3%. But, you know, the first quarter being down 17% of this year and, you know, the second quarter being up about 12%, the third quarter's off to a good start, about up 3%. So, you know, it really is just kind of that sequence of returns and starting off in a hole. You know, Dana can give more context to it, but I just wanted to kind of bring that back to how the year started.
And just one other general question. Are we, are you guys using as a benchmark, like, that we want a 6% or 7% return? Or are you using as your benchmark that you want the S and P 500 or whatever, an index?
So for the town, obviously, we have a target rate of return, which we're trying to achieve, and that's, you know, the what you've established as the town. As a benchmark for our investment strategy, we use a blended benchmark. And Dana can certainly speak to how that's created, but it is a 5%, 35% blended benchmark that we measure our portfolio.
Thank you.
We are trying to achieve the 6.75%. I mean, I don't know if that answered your question.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and yeah, just to speak to the benchmarks for a minute, you know, there is, so S and P 500 you mentioned, and I do think that's super important to kind of focus on because what we're finding with a lot of investors, and this is not just symmetry specific, asset managers in general kind of, you know, kind of working on this with folks and and making sure it's understood that whereas the S and P 500 is kind of showing some buoyed performance relative to pretty much any other index you could look at, it it kind of belies a very top-heavy market that's driving that. And I, and that's kind of a key point that that we, and as I say, I know other asset managers as well are trying to get across that the market, so to speak, if you're, if your thought of the market is S and P 500, you're looking at obviously US large stocks. And the US large stocks, again, market cap weighted. So the very largest US large stocks are kind of driving performance. And and we've seen this exacerbated during COVID. It's something that we've been experiencing for, you know, a few years now, but COVID has really driven that. So actually, could we move forward a couple of slides? Because I think it would be nice to see that graphically as well, while we're talking about it. This one right here would be great. So, so this is just one example. You know, there was a Market Watch article that we pulled this graph. It's a nice detail. The article was talking about how the US market hasn't earned anything since 2017 if you took out these giant five stocks. And so when you think about the S and P 500, which most people think, that's the market, that's the benchmark. What you've got with that is a very kind of top-heavy index at this point. And that's not entirely unusual, but the level of concentration has gotten very high. You have more than 20% of the S and P 500 now represented by Apple, Microsoft, Amazon, Google, and Facebook. And if you were to remove these giant five, so to speak, you have a very different performance. And when you look at a symmetry partners type investment, where certainly those stocks are not removed, they're part of your investment, they're absolutely helping to drive performance in your investment. But relative to market cap weight, where they're, they're going to be, I mean, at a, at its most simplest, if the largest stocks are the largest percent of your portfolio, and those are the stocks performing really well, which of course, intuitively, we know they all are, right? We know they've done very well over the last several years, and in a COVID period that we're in now, they've annihilated the other stocks in the, in the, a lot of the other stocks in the economy, right? Because everyone is home, everybody is using these types of services. So having a symmetry type investment where you're, not only are you not market cap weighting these, but you're also kind of over emphasizing smaller, more value price stocks, lower price stocks. That hasn't worked in this period relative to a benchmark. And I'll tell you, it's not worked for many people. Again, this is not, you know, something that's specific to us. Our small value orientation certainly kind of exacerbated it over this recent period. But it's, you know, kind of a typical refrain among asset managers at this point. There's another slide, I think, that drive, that kind of gives some good information on this. If we had hit the next slide. Thank you. So, so what, what we see, this Facebook, Apple, Amazon, Netflix, and Google kind of dominating returns, what you can see there is just the performance of the index, and this goes back now all the way to 2005. The article was kind of, this is a different graph. The article was talking about since 2017, it hasn't even been positive performance in US markets without those stocks. But even if you go all the way back to 2005 and you see kind of where these, they started and the performance of, again, the US market, and bear in mind, of course, the US market has outpaced the ex-US markets. You can see that these FAANG stocks, so to speak, have driven a lot of the performance. So, so why is that bad, you might ask? You might say, well, okay, fine, you know, that that's great, and we should just try to capture that performance. And what we would say is certainly, in hindsight, we could, we could go back, if we could go back and say, yep, let's, let's kind of focus on the FAANGs, knowing how it would work out. We'd love to do it, but of course, not knowing in advance and not knowing at what point, you've got kind of two risk factors now with, from our perspective, with an investment like that. First, these are correlated stocks, meaning they're, they're in similar businesses. They're, they're exposed to similar risks and they're a very, very big part of the market. So if there is some regulatory or public policy type problem or or public relations type problem with privacy or whatever it is, right? You name what that idiosyncratic risk could be that could give problems to these stocks. Our thought would be, you know, that's kind of a little bit riskier than a type of a portfolio where you're spreading the risk a little bit more. You're not, you're not going and putting all of the dollars into the larger growth stocks. And then the other thing we would say that, oh, I'm going to pause. I think I heard somebody.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm only big picture here, but if we do not beat the S and P when the market's going up, that makes sense because we, as a town, have to be more conservative. But when the S and P is going down, it feels like we should be beating it, you know, because we are more conservative. And that doesn't seem to be what's happening from the information you've given us. Am I, am I looking at this incorrectly?
Well, I mean, I'll jump in here for just one second. I think it's important to remember that you are a globally diversified portfolio. So measuring the town's performance versus any single index is a challenge, right? The S and P 500 is 500 big US companies, as Dana's pointed out, dominated by five specific companies here in recent performance history. But you've got a large exposure over 20% to non-US stocks and certainly 35% of your allocation outside of stocks completely. You know, and and when we look at a time period like this, you know, the S and P 500 through the end of the second quarter was still down through June 30th, was down 3% for the year. But important to focus on were non-US stocks, right? The the Europe, Asia, Far East index, right, the Microsoft, the MSCI EFE was down 11% for that time period. So, you know, I think measuring how we're doing versus the S and P you know, that's, it's a commonly used benchmark, but not a, not completely appropriate for our investment strategy.
Thank you.
Sure. Were there any other?
Anything to add on that? I think that's exactly right. It really is a mix of US, international, developed markets, emerging markets. At the end of the day, and I want this to be high level, I want to get across, you know, what are you getting with us versus, say, an S and P 500 investment? I think you're focused on the right things. And, you know, from our perspective, it really is about diversification. It's, the S and P 500 was a very difficult benchmark to beat over the last several years. I was reading recently that Warren Buffett underperformed the S and P 500 over the last 10 years. And I I grant you, I understand the thought on the 35% fixed income. But we are, you know, the the last several periods, you're dealing with sort of the, the only way you're going to beat the S and P 500 is if you sort of, you know, actually concentrated even more, right, in those largest growth stocks, those tech, those big tech companies. So it is, Jason's exactly correct. If the town wants to diversify that risk, which we do think is prudent, then the benchmark, of course, needs to be the more diversified benchmark. I I understand where you're coming from. I'm having these conversations with many people, you know, hey, just go I'm having these conversations with many people, you know, hey, just go to the S&amp;P and call it a day. And our, you know, again, we think there's idiosyncratic risk to that. And the other thing I would add is that, you know, ex ante, it would have been nice to have done it, but looking at it now, and looking at where valuation ratios are now, in other words, what is the price of that, right? These large growth stocks relative to the rest of the market. Of course, this outperformance has only driven that spread to be even wider. And so the expected return on the other stocks is actually, you know, even better relative to these large growth companies. So in order for you to kind of think that these large growth companies are going to grow into the expectation on their price, you really have to expect that they will keep kind of hitting the ball out of the park, so to speak. Because again, it's not, and this is an important piece to understand about this, it's not that we wouldn't agree that these companies have a leg up in an economy like this, you know, where you have people at home ordering online, doing things online. Absolutely, we would agree that their cash flows, their ability to produce profits is going to be heightened relative to a lot of other companies in the market. But the price of those stocks has been bid up so much, you know, and a nice analogy that I have heard that I think works well is to say, at some point spread, even the Patriots are not a good team, right? Or not a good bet, excuse me. They're a great team, and they'll probably win, but you won't make any money on it if the point spread is too wide. And so that's sort of what we would say to the town, is that yes, we absolutely understand the outperformance of the S&amp;P, the dominance of that benchmark, and the expectation set. And hopefully, you understand why the portfolio has done what it's done. And then you sort of have to weigh what your view is on taking that type of approach. So I'm going to stop now, get any last questions? I know you want to get to fees. I don't want to hold that off, obviously.
So I'm not sure if there are any other questions on market performance, stock market in general, the investment strategy, before I circle back to fees. Is there anything on, that anybody wanted to comment or question? No? I'm not hearing anything at all. All right, so I know, maybe we could drop back five or six slides to the one that said in fees. I just want to touch on this, as I know there was a question regarding it. Couple more. I promise, we're getting close. Okay, so regarding fees, our fee schedule is a quarter of a percent, 25% on $0 to $10 million, anything over that, the fee goes to 0.2%. Because we hadn't calculated the full fiscal year as of the time of creation here, what you see is the four quarters broken out, the total 2019 fee, and then it's shown in terms of percentage and relative to the ending value of 2019. So essentially, it blends out to about 0.2%, actually slightly lower than that, we rounded up, I think it's about 0.197%. It's roughly $28,000 and change for the first quarter. And obviously, it ebbs and flows with whatever the market is doing for that particular quarter. So we build quarterly interrears. So for the calendar year of 2019, $118,000 or just about 0.2%.
Mr. President, it's Linda. I know this has taken a bit of time, and it was my request that they make this report, so I think we can wrap it up. Thank you so much. The fees do seem reasonable. I guess my major concern, just overarching concern, is that we haven't beaten the S&amp;P in any downturn, from what I can tell from the data you've given us. And so maybe we do need to reevaluate our policies. And I do believe we have an investment committee that perhaps should be meeting and talking about these things in a bit more sophisticated way than certainly I can. But we do appreciate that, you know, your efforts and, right, so thank you.
Sure, you know, happy to help. And, you know, I know there was a couple of slides at the end that you can review on your own. We certainly see the changing demographics of the town with increasing retirees and average distributions going out, and more money going out of the portfolio than goes in. So I think it lies time to review investment policy, reform the investment committee, and certainly allow us to participate in those investment committees as we had in the past, where we're more than ready to come up and work with everybody and review all. Appreciate your listening and all the information, questions. If there's anything else, certainly feel free to call or email either Dana or myself. But, you know, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Let's see, no, I was just getting ready for my next.
All right. Okay, all right. Our next item under Old Business.
Hello. Councilor, attached is the latest update for June 2020. This update represents 100% of the revenue this year. Overall revenues are currently at 98%, lower than last year's 101%. Expenditures are at 98%, slightly lower than last year's 99%. There are no significant wire rates, interest, or support. Also, attached is a monthly report of the Penn State House for June 2020.
Do you have any questions from the council?
Yeah, just quickly, Ms. Mills, are we expecting any further large expenditures to come in? And have we accounted for all of the revenue? I know there was some late file, we allowed some late filings of taxes due to COVID. So have we seen any more? Or are we pretty much wrapping up at this point?
As far as the expenditures are concerned, we have most of the expenditures accounted for, we do still have the voices coming in. And most of them are software-related, productivity, implementation, and external consulting. As far as revenues are concerned, we have, the only thing I have in this report is taxes and also more revenue coming in from.
Sorry, you broke up there in that last one. A little bit more revenue coming from?
The tax office.
From the tax office.
Okay. So roughly on the numbers that you have here, it's about a finish somewhere in the black of about 175,000, unaudited, obviously.
Yeah, it's about 177 right now. It's going to go up a little, then it's going to go down for the bill, so I think it's going to be.
I'm just concerned that we're maintaining it, and with all the COVID situation that we had, we managed to stay in the black. Thank you. A motion to receive, place on file.
Seconded.
All is in favor?
Who's that?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Patterson?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Grady?
Hi. Passes, seven to zero.
Next item is a request advertised for a virtual public workshop on a complete streets ordinance. Ms. Crosby?
Yes, Gary Crosby here, 51 Kirk Douglin Road. I am the town planner. In September of 2019, the council passed a resolution to have staff to draft a complete streets ordinance. Let me see here, never mind. Portsmouth, among other things, in May of 2020, I presented such a draft to the town council. At that time, you passed a motion, seven to zero, to schedule a virtual public hearing workshop. So I am here tonight to ask you to set a date and authorize us to expend funds to advertise for said workshop.
For September, you said, Gary?
For whenever you like. It's not, I was kind of confused by that motion in May. I've always understood that it's the council's prerogative to schedule your own meetings. And so I didn't, I didn't know quite what to do. I think that you are free to schedule a date and authorize us to advertise as you see fit.
Okay, in that case, I move that we schedule a virtual public workshop to review our complete streets ordinance for the evening of September 16th. Starting at, I don't know, 7:00 PM, that's when council meetings generally start.
Okay. Gary, do you anticipate this taking a long time, or is this something we can do in the course of a general council meeting?
Every time I think I understand what's going to happen, that sort of thing, I get proved wrong. So I, it is entirely up to you.
Are we talking about a workshop or a hearing?
It's a workshop. As the motion, as the resolution, or as the motion said by, made by Ms. Abbott, to schedule a virtual public workshop.
Should it be a four-hour workshop on a weekend, then? Gary, I've never served on a council before, I've never scheduled a public workshop before, so any, you know, guidance or suggestions or recommendations you may have are gladly accepted.
I am staff and defer to the council.
I think we could probably reserve, I mean, at a minimum, I would say we probably want to have at least an hour. There is a fairly lengthy ordinance. I mean, I don't see the harm in having it on that Wednesday. We could have it be a special, our regular meeting is on the 14th, but we could, you know, dedicate a special meeting workshop on the 16th, you know, just to address the ordinance. Not sure if we could get it all in on the 14th. I don't want that agenda.
No, I would, I would prefer to have it as a separate meeting. I think it would be easier to manage it with it's not included in our normal agenda. I would just request that we make it at least two hours, one hour just seems a little tight. So September 16th, Wednesday, 7 to 9:00 PM?
Was that a motion?
Earlier, generally, we do get greater participation when we don't hold.
If we don't what?
If you hold, you get less participation if you hold a meeting.
On a weekend, yeah, I agree. I think it's, sorry, you're, I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
Yeah, I think a weekday is better for our workshop.
Okay, and is 7 to 9:00 PM okay? Or should we start at 6:00 PM? What do you, is there anything that seems to have better participation?
6:00 PM is generally difficult for people to get into town hall right after work, they're trying to get prepped, and so 7 o'clock is generally better.
Okay, so I don't actually recall what my motion was, but whatever my motion was, I move that we hold a public workshop to review our complete streets ordinance on Wednesday, September 16th, from 7 to 9:00 PM.
Seconded.
Second.
Is there any further, no other comments, questions?
Dr. Aguirre, I have a comment. I would say, I would say that they, there is a, for the public, there is a draft of the ordinance on item one of Old Business. It can be found on the agenda section of the website for the May 11th, 2019 meeting. So in preparation for the September 16th meeting, I urge everybody to get onto the website and go to the May 11th meeting to find the draft of the ordinance.
If we can highlight the.
Can we just put that on the front page of the website, of the recent news or whatever that is?
Please, under news and announcements, can we make, put an announcement with a link to the draft ordinance in that section of the website, please?
Certainly, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think it was necessary to clutter up the website, but I'd be happy to do that.
I think it would make it a lot easier for us to share the link, so to make the information widely available, or readily available. And where, when, will advertise in the newspaper, then?
Yeah, I presume so. We generally, if we are having a public hearing, which for an ordinance, other than the zoning ordinance, we are, we generally, by past practice, have advertised once in the paper of record. Lately, we have been advertising in the Portsmouth Times, and in this particular case, it is a workshop, so it is entirely up to you about how you want to advertise for the workshop.
Well, I think the Portsmouth Times is obviously the first place we should advertise. Are there any other avenues for advertisement that we've used in Portsmouth?
Well, certainly, we have used the Newport Daily News. It's, it's, it's pretty darn expensive, I'll tell you, to use the Newport Daily News. So it's entirely up to you.
And we don't really have a mechanism to advertise digitally, other than putting it on the news and announcements section of our website, correct?
Correct. I suppose we could, the planning department has a Facebook page, and we will certainly put it on there. I'm not certain how, I'm not certain about any other avenues, no.
Okay, so Portsmouth Times and the planning department Facebook page sound appropriate?
Sure, and the front, and the front page of the, and the front page of the town website.
Yes, correct. Do you need a motion for that, or is that, are we okay for that?
I need a motion for you to select a date and to authorize us to expend town funds to advertise for the.
We have that, we have that, we have the motion and the second. It's September 16th, from 7 to 9:00 PM.
We have the motion, and we have a second. Can I add that authorize to advertise?
Actually, that's part of the, that's part of the requirement, so we.
Okay, good.
It's covered. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All is in favor?
Ms. Kujafuza?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Patterson?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Grady?
Hi. Seven to zero. Next item. Is the community energy aggregation plan summary and request for a public hearing as well.
Rich Tulewski, 79 Cromwell Drive, Director of Business Development. On the 22nd of June, Town Council meeting, you passed a resolution to authorize the town administrator. passed a resolution to authorize the town administrator to come up with a plan for energy aggregation for the town. We have solicited a consultant called Good Energy to come up with a program that's called Community Choice Aggregation. We have Jamie Rhodes from Good Energy that I'm going to turn it over to, to lead the discussion. Jamie?
All right. I believe I'm unmuted now. Thank you very much, Rich. So I was before you in the, as Rich said, on June 22nd, to describe and go through the choice aggregation plan and how it operates. So today, we're once again before you, now that we have worked with just as a quick refresher, the purpose of this program is to have Portsmouth choose its supplier of electricity and to go through this, the procedure to choose that supplier. Once again, National Grid will go, will continue to deliver electricity, owns the delivery system, the wires and the poles directly to customers. But this program is about choosing our own electricity supplier in order to achieve lower costs for our residents and small businesses that are currently on standard offer, as well as to potentially increase the amount of renewable energy that is the default service for residents. So if we go to the next slide, there's only four slides, so we'll be, we'll go through this pretty quick. As just a reminder, where we're at in the process here is in June, the council here passed this article allowing us to both choose a consultant as well as to develop this plan. We have been working with Rich Tulipski and Rich Rainier here to develop a draft plan that we could then take out to public comment. So the plan has been included. It was the second link in the agenda. We won't go through it in detail because there's plenty of pages there and that's the purpose of the public, the public hearing. Our goal tonight is to have the council authorize a public hearing at the August 11th meeting so that we can receive public input and have a further discussion on the details of plan and potentially the plan, council's approval. We actually approve it that evening for submission to the Public Utilities Commission. So if you go to the next slide, just a quick overview of the components of the plan that you can read through in more detail, once again, the link in the agenda. It goes through the eligible participants, which is currently anybody that has their electricity service from National Grid on the basic service. So that is residential, commercial, industrial customers, anybody that's using the default product is eligible to be, to be enrolled into the program. The oversight and management of the program, while Good Energy has taken on the role of managing the day-to-day aspects of developing the plan as well as the program itself, there's written into the plan that we will be reporting directly to the town administrator and to be subject to his oversight and direction, as well as have any recommendations for modifications of the program or amendments to the program over time would have to be still authorized and reviewed by the city council as a whole. The product, the plan does describe the electricity products, which I'll go into a little bit more detail in the next slide. It also describes how we would go out to bid to find a competitive supplier to take the towns, to supply the towns' needs for electricity. Attachment two gives a full education outreach, a scope of education outreach that we would do prior to the program becoming operational. It describes both the mailings that would go to residents and small businesses that would be impacted, outlining what the price differential will be once we've gone through the bidding process, as well as other outlets that, that as a consultant, we would be, we would be working through, whether that's the Chamber, the Newport County Chamber of Commerce to make sure that our business customers are informed, any social media accounts that the city runs or has, or the town runs and has access to, as well as any other community and neighborhood associations that would be worthwhile for us to meet with, talk to, and make sure that we're available to answer questions to. And then finally, it describes the procedures by which any person can opt out of the program. Once again, it's not a mandatory program in any way. People can leave at no cost themselves. They do not have to participate. And all the procedures on how to opt out, whether by, by mail, by phone call, or by signing, signing a form on a website, all the different avenues are available and that's described in detail in the plan. So if you go to the final slide, this gets to the question of what electricity products would be available to residents and small businesses in Portsmouth. The standard product, this would be the automatic enroll product that for anybody that's moving into town or just gets rolled over into the program. The goal would provide savings in comparison to National Grid, also including extra renewable energy. Right now, we are estimating that at about 10% extra renewable energy based off of the market currently. Though that is subject to change based off of market conditions when the bid goes out. And if in order to achieve cost savings for everybody, we have to drop that down to 9% or 8%, then we would, we would do so and consistent with this plan. And so we just like to build in that flexibility to make sure we can achieve that core component of saving everybody money on their electricity supply. There'll also be three optional products. So anybody in the program can choose and move between these products at their leisure. And so there's the basic product, which has no additional renewable energy and offers the most potential savings on both month by month and over the course of the contract. There's also a 50% renewable energy for those that are willing to pay a little bit more above market rate in order to achieve 50% of the electricity coming from renewable sources. And for those that want to opt up to paying a premium on top of their electricity, their electricity supply service, they can opt for 100% renewable energy. And so that all of, all the electricity they use would be offset by renewable energy generation. So those are the different products that we're proposing to offer. And once again, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to take this program out to public hearing. In advance of the August 11th date, we are proposing to, both by law and because it's a good idea, post a notice in the Portsmouth Times for its next two issues, so that there's two full publications of the Times that would inform folks that this opportunity is here, as well as to publish the plan on the city website so that it's available for download, for easy access. Rich has, Rich Tulipski here has so generously volunteered to receive any sort of written comments that come in, in, in advance of that hearing, which we, which Good Energy will be happy to respond to any comments or questions that come up, as well as during the public hearing on the 11th, we will take any comments that come in and provide responses to them as part of the final plan. And just as a note, when we did the public hearings in both Central Falls and Barrington over the last two months, the comments that we received were generous, have universally been positive about the prospect of moving forward with the plans. And the change, and there were no substantive changes made due to the public comments that we received. And so both the city, the city council in Central Falls and the town council in Barrington opted to approve the plan as presented at the end of the public hearing, given that no council member sought to make a substantive change at that point. And that's a brief update, as well as a description of what we are requesting this evening.
Now, we're requesting a public hearing to get this moving forward. So if the town council approves the plan at the public hearing, that allows us to send it to the PUC, get on the PUC docket. At that point, we are still not committed to any aggregation plan. So that just gets the PUC to approve our plan. So we can go to the next step to go out to an RFP for competitive bids, come up with an actual rate, and then do our public education program again before we actually implement this program and allow people to opt out of the program once we implement. So I request the town council approve a public hearing for the 11th of August. We think we can get it done in 10 minutes because we're going to put the plan out to the people in well enough in advance. There is no firm town commitment and it's pretty straightforward.
Right, thank you, Ms. Tulipski. Do you have any questions from councilors? Hamilton?
I'd like to know why in this, I understand the, the goal for getting renewable energy and, and green energy, but just based on this slide alone, in fact, that our residents are already hurting with funds, why are we offering the standard product, not the basic product as the automatic enrollment, where the basic product would be more potential savings for our residents? And allow them to opt into the standard product.
Jamie, do you want to take that on?
Sure. The, the purpose of that is to, is to, from our, once again, from Good Energy's perspective, is that achieving that, like, just below cost parity while adding the additional renewable energy allows us to hit what is generally the dual goals of the program, which is to increase the use of renewable energy while providing cost savings. And so that's, that's a recommendation that we as a consultant have made, although of course, the final determination would be for the council to make and can be done so anytime between now and the final adoption of the program.
What is the cost savings based, based off of the standard product or the basic product? Are we talking 5%, 10%, 20%? Is somebody's average bill going to go down 50 bucks instead of 100 bucks?
No, the, we estimate right now, and this once again, based off of historic information, so caveat about future results being the same as past performance, is that we're probably talking anywhere between a 3% to 6% price differential. So the basic would provide additional 3% to 6% savings over the standard, while the standard product is aimed to be price competitive to National Grid.
So with the standard products, you're really only getting the renewable portion. You're not actually saving money.
Our intention is fully to save money with it, but it's not the, the maximum savings possible. It would be more of a, somewhere between a 1% and 3% savings plus the additional renewable energy.
So if my electric bill is typically 100 bucks a month, it's going to be 99 bucks a month with the standard products and potentially 94 to 95 with the basic product.
According to my back of the envelope estimation, yes.
I would feel better if we went out and sold all of our citizens. We are going to give you the most cost savings and you can opt into renewable rather than doing it in reverse. Bringing this plan out there to say we're saving you money and not saving you money is kind of disingenuous.
And the, the opportunity for the public hearing would be an opportunity for us to present the plan and to also make such an improvement before approving it. And obviously, as a consultant, I follow your direction.
I think that's a decision this council could make to say, I would make a motion that we lead with the basic plan and not the standard product and allow people to be automatically enrolled in the basic and opt into the standard.
You surely have the, the power to do that right at this point, or at any point until we actually implement, implement the program. Sending this program to the PUC does not block us into that 10%, but if you want to go ahead with a non-green energy supplement program, go with the standard state green, that's your prerogative.
I think it behooves us as a council to do everything we can to help our residents.
I know, well, Ms. Jackson had his hand up first, Dr. Ryan. Ms. Jackson, did you want to say anything?
I did not have my hand up, but thank you for noticing.
Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, Kevin, we doctors have to stick together. Come on. My, my question was, currently, the state has requirements as to the percentage of consumed energy that has to be produced by renewable resources. I read somewhere that that's up to 38.5%. Is that true?
No, at this moment, and I, not looking at that number exactly, but I believe we are approximately at, actually, if you give me one minute, I can go look that up if you give me a moment. I don't want to give you the wrong number.
True. Mark, is that the state's goal or is that what you think the state is already producing?
Yeah, I guess what my hasty reading of this, it's a standard, but I can't figure out whether, as you're saying, it's a standard that we are reaching for, or it's the standard currently. From what I read, it's hard to tell.
Don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure we're not getting 38% of our energy from renewable sources.
No, no, we are not.
I thought the original goal was like 15% by 20 something or other.
Yes, and once again, I'm.
Can I just say, I think the goal of doing community aggregation like this is not only to save people money, but to increase how much renewable energy we're, we're opting for so that we can save people by hopefully having a greater impact on the, you know, the negative impacts of climate change. So I think it's, you know, both things are goals. So I am actually in favor of providing an option that does a little bit of both, and then people can opt for no renewable energy and extra savings, or more renewable energy and no savings. But a mix or balance of both would be the goal for a community aggregation plan.
I agree with you, but I think that as the council trying to save our citizens money at this point in life with COVID and everything else going on, we should offer them to start the plan that saves them the most money and allow them to opt in and not say, this is the plan. If you don't like it, opt out.
Except that we're not, we're not offering by default a plan that's going to cost them more. So they're going to be saving money either way. They're just not going to, we're not necessarily.
That's not what he just said. He said that he's roughly, you're roughly going to save a percent.
It's still a savings.
Well, I'd like to just chime in here. I mean, I'd have to agree here with Ms. Hamilton on this one. As far as if we're trying to present an option that save money, I think the basic plan is the one that I think we can all sit here and even our consultant could say, that has the highest potential to save us money. And then allow residents to opt in if they do prefer renewable, because there, there may be an added cost to do that, or maybe they break even. But if we're, if we want to say that we're, you know, our position here is to, we're doing this in an effort to save money, then I think we have to go forward with, with the basic option, which I think we can all agree should save them money at, at a minimum. That should save them money. If you want, you know, if you want that optional feeling of, you know, like a green technology or renewable energy and you can afford to, you know, buy the 10% renewable or the 50% renewable, then you have that option to opt in. But it does, it does make sense to start with the basic and then allow the resident to opt in for the potential added costs. I, I just think that that's a very basic approach. And otherwise, it does seem a little disingenuous that you're going to save them money, but they have to opt out to save the money. I, I, that's just my opinion as well.
No, I disagree with you. I think it's not disingenuous if we're clear when we, you know, present this plan to the public that our goals are to increase our renewable energy usage and potentially save people some money and that the goal, the primary goal to do this is not necessarily just save as much money as possible. That's my own opinion and we can vote accordingly, obviously.
When people opt in for this program, would there not be some sort of menu they could select? I want.
They're not opting in. That's the thing. They're, they're being said, this is what you're getting if we choose this plan.
Right.
And they have to opt out.
Aren't they also able to select these 50% and 100% options as well?
Yes, but we're saying that we're going to start you at the standard 10% product that is maybe marginally going to save you a dollar. As opposed to saying, we're going to give you the five or 6% savings. And it is, as far as a town goes, we're doing quite well in terms of green energy since all of our buildings are run by green energy.
Can I ask a question? When would the opting in and out happen?
Yes, this is, this is Jamie. To answer that question, the opting in and out is once the plan, once the supply goes out to bid and we know exactly, we have a firm number of when the firm amount of what the cost is per kilowatt hour cost for electricity supply is, at that point, we'll run a between 30 to 45 day period where folks can opt out of the program. And as part of that opt-out program, people can also opt into the different products for their enrollment. And to get back to the previous question about where we are currently at, it is 18 and a half percent is 2021 minimum for renewable energy standard and the 10, an additional 10% puts us on par with what the state. minimum for renewable energy standard and the 10, an additional 10% puts us on par with what the state minimum standard will be in 2028. Just as a.
An aspirational level, what I saw. Okay.
Very aspirational. The 38%, the 38% is the goal by 2035.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I didn't say that on the state page that I looked at, so okay.
Len, Len, you have a question?
Yeah, well, so, right, so now I do have my hand raised. Thank you, Mr. President. So I understand the points have been made by, by you, Mr. President, by Mr. Hamilton about cost savings. Obviously, the basic plan will be, we're not talking about dramatic difference here. It's, it's one point for the standard plan and it's five for the other or less, but nonetheless, that's, that's valid. To Ms. Abbott's point, that the main purpose of this more than just cost savings, my opinion about that is that the main purpose of it is up to each individual to understand what they want it to be. And some individuals may want the main purpose to be cost savings and others may want the main purpose to be broader than that. I'm always cautious, even if it's cost savings, I'm always cautious about making changes to things that affect residents by which they must opt out of rather than opt into. So I was reticent about this whole project because it will be an opt out project where all residents will be affected unless they opt out. Given that structure of it, I'm cautious, but what I would really like to say about the issue is having just skimmed through this 23-page document since it was made public mid last week, I would like to defer this discussion. I'm open to the idea of making it, making the standard, it's hard to use language, making the standard, the basic plan, the standard plan. Making the basic plan, what is, or what people are.
The default.
Into. Thank you for that word, the default. I would like to hear others weigh in and that's why I'd like to make this decision at, at or after the hearing.
Yeah, can we wait to make this decision until we have the actual numbers?
And comments from the public is my.
Yeah, those will be very useful. And, you know, if we're going to make offerings to the public, they should know what's being offered.
And we are having a public hearing.
So I can, obviously, as a, as a consultant here, I can't weigh in on, on when you make the decision. I can let you know just as a, as a procedure that the Public Utilities Commission is looking for is that when you submit the plan to them, you have to determine what the standard product will be. That doesn't lock you in forever. That, at that point, so when we go out to public hearing for this, for the meeting on the 11th, obviously, we have to put something in there as our standard product and then the optional products. And then following the public hearing, either you all, the council can make changes then and then have it submitted to the Public Utilities Commission. If we were to change it after the Public Utilities Commission approves, and that, once again, the PUC doesn't have clear expectations of how that would happen, though it would require us to go back before them to inform them of the change, but I don't foresee there being any problem about waiting to make that final determination when you have the numbers. After we get the bids, the, the bidding process is done.
Yeah.
So there, obviously, there's a lot of these check-in points about for when the town can choose to stay in developing the plan and program or leave. Once we get to the point of actually having the numbers and then preparing the mailings to customers, that's when we have to make at least a final determination of this is what we're going to inform all the consumers of.
The question is, what would you like on the plan for the hearing on the 11th? Would you like the standard product to be no energy, green energy or the standard product to be 10%? I could write the plan either way for the purposes of the 11 August hearing.
I would move that we keep the standard product, the one that does include the 10% extra renewable energy and let, and see what the public's comments are.
I second that. This is Linda.
And I just have a question, Mr. President. There's, I just note that there's a question in the Q and A box.
So the question that was, it's under the Q and A is from Mr. Aldrich. It's once one makes an initial selection in an energy plan, when cannot that option be changed?
When can it be changed?
Yeah, when can it be changed? So if they, if they went with the, the standard product, could they, could they change it at any point?
Yes, they can change it at any point and then it will become effective at the next time the meter is read. So whatever plan that you're in, you have to be in it for one month and the next time the meter is read, a, a change can be implemented.
But, but to, to Hap's question, and what really needs to be made clear is you're not making the initial selection, Hap. You are being put into a plan chosen by this council. And then you have to either opt out of the system completely or into one of the other plans.
Yes, that is correct.
Can I just make one more observation? Is, there are options for community aggregation plans. I belong to one, for example, where you can increase your renewable energy percentage on your electrical bill and you pay a premium for it, but you know what percentage you're buying of renewable energy versus standard sources. So that, those options are available to the public already and I know that people do opt into them. I think our role here as a council is to put forward a plan that maximizes the overall benefit to our community by combining cost savings with a positive impact on our environment and our carbon footprint. And I think that is the main argument for keeping the standard product as they have outlined. And people can opt for extra savings if that is a priority for them. But for us, we need to look at the big picture and what is best for our community overall. And I think reducing our carbon footprint is an important goal. And I think that would be in line with our objectives and comprehensive plan and a lot of things that we've discussed on this council. And now I rest my case. Sorry, I've talked.
If I may, Mr. President. I, I thought that was, that was very well put. And, and so there is a motion on the floor that I look forward to supporting.
So there, there is a motion in a second workshop on the 11th with this standard product. Residents of the town. And then residents will have to make that point during a workshop that the, you know, these other options, the residents would have to opt or, or out of the standard product and into either the basic or the added renewables. We have to make that clear, very clear at that meeting. And back to the, the motion is to proceed with the standard product. It's a motion in a second.
Ms. Ujifusa?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Nay.
Katsman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. Yar?
Nay. Passes seven to zero.
We have the text for a public press announcement. We'll get that to the town clerk so we can get that into the Portsmouth Times this Thursday. We also published a plan on the town's website in preparation for that hearing on the 11th.
But procedural question, is this a public hearing on the 11th, another council meeting?
That is the council meeting.
Okay.
It's the holiday on the 10th.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here now, on to our next item under Old Business, number five. It's a resolution authorizing the transfer of the Prudence Island School property to the Prudence Island School Foundation.
This, this actually was supposed to, about to come before the council last fall and authorized closing to go forward to transfer the Prudence Island School property. The title insurance company's attorneys representing the seller, or the buyer rather, brought up the issue of an, of an old archaic Prudence statute that had a glitch into the whole thing. So this, this resolution was, was put on hold and town requested a, a legislation to be enacted this, this session in the General Assembly and the council submitted a resolution in support of that legislation. And that has now passed, so that removes the, the technical glitch in the general laws. So now we're back with the resolution for the council to authorize the closing and to authorize the council president to sign a deed and any other ancillary documents necessary to effectuate the sale.
Mr. President, just one quick question. Does this violate the charter in the fact that it could be, is it over two acres?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the, the transfer.
Second.
Thank you.
Second is no comments. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katsman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. Yar?
Aye. Passes seven to zero. On to Old Business, number six. Request approval of resolution authorizing 12 questions to appear on the ballot for the November 2020 general election. For change, or the whole.
This, this resolution is the next step to implement the council's vote a week ago to go forward with, with proposed town charter amendments, put them on the ballot for the next election. For the general election in November, town clerk and I put together this wording and approval of the council so we can move forward and, so the clerk and the canvassing authority can move forward with the questions on the ballot on November 3rd.
I move that the charter changes as presented be put on the ballot in November.
I second. Linda Ujifusa?
We have a motion in seconds.
The motion to adopt the resolution.
Yes, to adopt the resolution.
Right.
Resolution. So we have a motion in a second to approve the resolution authorizing the 12 questions to appear on the ballot for November 2020 general election. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Katsman?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Dr. Yar?
Aye. Passes seven to zero. On to new business. The first item is, is request permission to erect a 70-foot freestanding antenna tower on land owned by the town of Portsmouth, by the town at the Portsmouth Transfer Station at no cost to the town into leased land for a dollar a year. Mr. Schenberger, you're muted.
Okay, I'm here now. Can, can you hear me?
You got it, yes.
Okay, is this where I asked for a motion to approve this? We.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So we would like to, to get some space, to get some, to put a tower by the transfer station. We have met with Richard Rayner and Brian Woodhead and been working on this for some time now. Actually, before we launched on Prudence four and a half months ago. So we would like to expand our reach onto Prudence and to do that, we need SPOT and Portsmouth. We feel this is the best way that the town, or excuse me, not the town, the residents of Prudence have some skin in the game and doing the one-year contracts with us, even though the majority of them are seasonal people. They know that they have to put a little in to get something out. Here at American Broadband, we've done the same. We've had a lot of skin in the game and a lot of investment in it. And we're asking the town to do the same thing, put a little investment into Prudence by allowing us to do this without any cost to the town or responsibility for the town or guarantees by the town. So we would have you guys additionally insured and it would allow us to continue to bring Prudence into the 21st century.
Mr. President? I would like to make a motion that we approve this. We've been working for six or seven years for Mr. Aldrich and other people on the island to try and get them better service. And this seems to be doing the trick for the islanders, so I think we would make this motion to approve the location with, and the contract with American Broadband.
Dr. Ryan? I just have one question. We're reasonably certain that this tower is not going to cast a shadow, make noise, have any that are going to make any of our town residents miserable. I wouldn't like to have that happen again.
Oh, I, I do not believe so. No, there is no moving parts on it that would make any noise. The location is out of reach of any residential houses. So, so I don't believe it would be. I'm sorry.
I would like to second the proposal.
I, I apologize, I still didn't hear you.
He seconded the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. We, we do have a hand up on the phone. We just have it as a phone number.
Hi, this is Theodore. Yes, this is Theodore P. D. B. 85, Longbourn. I wanted to speak in favor of this, but I, the chair of the Celebrate and Recycle Committee, I also wanted to share with the town council a couple considerations. We need to make sure that we understand what the lease duration is. I know that we can think about 25 years, but you know that there's a pity of technological changes, there's very quick, like what the, the technology now and what could be the technology in 10 years. So we just want to make sure we protect the town that there is a wind down or decommission plan for the towers should the technology become obsolete. I know that the town is, you know, you know, behind the transportation model, but we just want to make sure we have some flexibility. I would recommend maybe, you know, implement for the lease that there is during a lot of years. I would defer to the town council on that, but maybe it's, think about five years extension that there is a certain point. And I, I find that all is very knowledgeable and passionate for what he's doing for Prudence Island. Obviously, this is a slam dunk. But I want to make sure the town also aware that for the generator, we would probably need to put a propane tank on the premises. So obviously, they'll coordinate to make sure that the, if the tank is put in a safe place, that any ice that may come off the shed or there's some sort of lattice on the transportation shed. So there is no finger pointing in case that ice shields does fall off the shed and hit this tower. Because the last thing we want is for this tower to get damaged because this is the lifeline for Prudence Island. We all know that internet is still important. So I, I just would like to hear a discussion how we would make sure no ice dams build on the roof at the transportation shed. And I'm just raising these points because I'm still supportive of this. I think it's still important for Prudence Island and Cooties. And any questions, I'm happy to get them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. There was a lot on that call. I'm not sure if everybody could hear everything clearly. I, I, there were some concerns about liability. It sounded like there were some concerns about the technology changes with provisions for taking the town. this tower down. And we haven't hammered out an agreement yet, Mr. Rayner, but these are some things. I think at this point, what we would be doing is approving the concept, the project forward. Town administrator and legal, Ms. Gavin, our solicitor, can work through the actual form of agreement and make sure that we're, you know, the town does have some protections in there. I think those were big comments. I'm not sure if the councilors have anything very specific or any specific that they would like to bring up at this time. Gavin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the comments by by Mr. Pikes and this is a compelling presentation, but it's not a it's not a contract. So I think that the issues raised should be addressed in whatever least the types of binding documents are presented. I support the plan. I think it's great and I certainly I'll vote for moving forward on this. But I would want to make sure that the the contracts the town enters into address all those issues.
Thank you, Gavin. Further questions from council?
Just to Mr. Pikes's point, the one thing we did do with the turbine was to ensure that if the entity goes away, if Arch's business, American Broadband, goes away, that there is a a bond set or money set aside for the removal of the tower if they're no longer around to do it. The town has to do it. The money comes from American Broadband. So if that could be written into the contract somehow, that would be helpful.
Okay. All right. So those are all quick points that can be negotiated, town administrator, if the council passes this tonight. So we have a motion and a second.
Mr. President, a question. Are we voting? Will we be able to vote on the contract or if we vote tonight, we will not be approving the contract? We are just saying it can go forward?
What we're voting, I mean, the way I read it is they were asking for permission. We would be giving them permission to to erect a 70-foot tower on land owned by the town at no cost to the town and to lease the land for a dollar a year. We're giving them permission to do that. The actual contract will be worked out with the town administrator and our town solicitor.
I'm wondering if I can make a motion to amend the motion so that we are approving it. We are approving that our staff prepare a contract to bring before us again.
Second.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a motion to amend, which would require the town council to review the contract. All those in favor?
Ms. Uchifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Katson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye.
Please amend the motion. Passes seven to zero. And then on to the main motion. Got a motion and a second on. All those in favor?
Ms. Uchifusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Katson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye.
Please amend the motion. Passes seven to zero. And then on to the main motion. Got a motion and a second on. All those in favor?
Ms. Uchifusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Katson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Number, hopefully, is the first step and a nice opportunity out there to continue providing service to the residents of Prudence. Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, we are going to move on to business number two, notice of availability for the Prudence Island light case and lighthouse at no cost to the town. Big Billy Director, U.S. General Services Administration. Got it now, Mr. Rayner, if you want to.
The General Services Administration of the United States in conjunction with the National Park Service, they have deemed the Sandy Point Lighthouse of Prudence Island Light to be in excess. They're making it before it goes up for sale. They have offered it to the town or a nonprofit organization. The lighthouse is already occupied and under contract to the Prudence Island Conservancy, the Prudence Island Conservancy. So I reached out to GSA and talked to their points of contact about how would it be perceived if the town endorsed the Prudence Island Conservancy taking over that property. They were delighted with that prospect. The Prudence Island Conservancy has an interest in it and they're already there. So it is my recommendation and I respectfully recommend and request that the town council endorse a letter to be prepared, also a letter of interest app that we endorse a letter of interest application made by the Prudence Island Conservancy to take over students, stewards, stewards, it's getting late, of the Prudence Island Light.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. Did you catch? All those in favor?
Ms. Uchifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Katson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Is that a hand camera?
Yes.
Okay, is this Donna?
My name's Ray Janess from the Conservancy.
Okay. Sorry.
I just want to express my gratitude. We'll be sending out a a letter for you to endorse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray. Our pleasure.
Thank you.
All right. On to new business number four, three, sorry, three. On to new business number three, resolution authorizing and honoring African-American history of Rhode Island and urging the adoption of African-American education of Rhode Island's K through 12 schools starting in 2021. Mr. Yell?
Mr. President, I'd like to move the resolution as submitted.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Uchifusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Katson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero. We're going to move on to new business number four, which is a resolution opposing the transfer of Rhode Island Turnpike and Bridge Authority revenue and management authority to the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. Before we get started with this, though, I do have to step aside and recuse myself. I am a engineering consultant and I provide services to both agencies. So I am just going to step aside and transfer the control over to Vice President. All you, Linda.
Okay, thank you. I guess I recognize Representative Terry Corfren. Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, there. Is that better?
There you go. Yes.
All right, well, good evening. I brought this to Councilwoman Vice President Uchifusa's attention after some other colleagues in the House reached out to me and there is concern this could end up in our budget. And since that is going to come up very quickly, we are not going to have a lot of time. I was hoping we could act preemptively and I'd like to know how you all feel about this and maybe in form of a resolution. So with that, I'd like to hear what you all think because that way I can carry that back to the State House when we get called back in the event that this winds up in the budget.
Representative Corfren, this is Linda Uchifusa. I just want to say that it's a relatively short resolution and basically what it is saying is that, and I drafted it and I did provide a copy of it to the Newport City Council who passed it a couple days ago. We just all recognize that the four major bridges in the state are being fairly well-maintained by the Rhode Island Turnpike and Bridge Authority and that there is potential either in the state budget language or in proposed legislation to move funds from RITBA to YDOT. And although I am certainly in favor of trying to help all the bridges in the state, I don't believe that it makes sense to turn this funding stream away from the four bridges because that would certainly harm those of us here on Aquidnic Island. So I would urge my colleagues to support this resolution to protect our motion bridges.
Yes, Councilwoman Vice President Uchifusa, thank you for pointing that out quickly. I've been sitting here and I know you all are looking at the draft resolutions and I apologize to the public, but yes, you explain that well. And I concur with the thoughts that Aquidnic Island as a whole, I think our bridges are, you know, they're our life, our lifeblood out to other places and they've been maintained relatively well. And so I think it would be a good us all to keep the organization and the funding the way it's set up now. Thank you.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, Councilman Kelly?
I'd like to move the resolution as submitted.
Second. Quick discussion.
Yeah, sure. I seconded or you seconded? Sure.
Don't care. I, this has been tried in the past before. I think at one point, I believe Representative Rice, who was Terry's predecessor in '72, brought this forward to do this. And DOT, while a much better-run organization in the recent past, the history of the Saconic River Bridge shows us that it being replaced after 45 years when, you know, Newport is 60 years old and the amount of hope is almost 100, I think it's better off being left as is right now and not trying a money grab to try and spread money around. Also, it just leads to further ability to toll the rest of Rhode Island.
All right, thank you.
Given the DOT's habit of prioritizing projects in our neck of the woods rather lower than elsewhere in the state, I prefer having an entity in charge that actually has owned these critical bridges in their area of concern and are not distracted by what's going on elsewhere. So I support this resolution as well.
Thank you. Mr. Katson, did you wish to speak?
No, I said my piece. Thank you.
Okay, I see Representative Corfren has her hand raised.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's a mistake. Okay.
I'm good. I'm good. Sorry about that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Katson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Uchifusa?
Aye. The motion carries six to zero with one abstention. Thank you, Representative Corfren, for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
President Aguirre, are you back with us?
I'm back with you here. Okay, on to new business number five. It's request capital improvement, preservation, recreation, and quality of life bonded appear on the ballot for the November 2020 general election. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. President, I put this on the agenda because obviously we have to have a discussion about what we're going to do post, well, post-COVID in a poor economic time where our citizens are likely and currently using our outside recreation facilities as well as what we're going to do with the Anne Hutchinson Building that currently houses the Portsmouth Multipurpose Senior Center 501(c)(3) because as we're all well aware, our extension with the state fire marshal expires in June and we have $0 budgeted for the needed improvements to the Anne Hutchinson Building. My numbers are probably off. I'm sure that Lisa Mills and others and bond counsel will have additions such as they did in the police station bond that I have included in the backup as well with interest rates, et cetera. So I guess for discussion purposes, I will move that we place a Town of Portsmouth Capital Improvement Preservation Recreation Quality of Life Bond on the November ballot. Like we did with the charter changes, I guess we'll have to have a final vote at some point with realized numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I, and I appreciate the the information that's been presented for discussion. I just want to clarify, though, the timeline for a resolution to be approved has to be before, has to be to the Secretary of State by August 5th, August 5th. So that really doesn't give us much time unless we set a special meeting to finalize these, this request and identify what the dollar amounts should be. So.
Yes, I'm aware.
All right. Just wanted to let those that are in attendance, that are not present, let them know that that would be the game plan as well. If we have to have another special meeting in advance of that. Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Kelly. This is a discussion that has to be had. We have information. The Jacob's Record tells us exactly how much money potentially needs to be put into town-owned properties in order to rehabilitate them. But what it doesn't do and what we really haven't come to a conclusion about yet is how to, you know, which properties we ought to be working on, how to allocate funds, what our priorities as a town ought to be, and try to come up with a systematic plan to try to figure out where we're putting town funds rather than sort of slapping a couple of cupolas here and fixing up a house there. And I think we really need to look at all of these things globally and the town's recreational needs globally and come up with a list of things that we need to to work on and then figure out how much of that can we afford to do and start to come up with numbers for a bond. So I don't think we're anywhere near being able to put a bond in front of the popular people, the people of the town. You know, we just don't have the information.
Mr. President?
Yeah, okay.
I, I do, in concept, agree with the overall objectives of this agenda item. I think it's important for us to invest in the quality of life for our residents and I think a lot of these projects are valid projects. I do think we probably need to put more time and energy into a robust prioritization process. So I would like to, you know, to steer us in that direction. Let's spend the time figuring out what we want to do, what are the top priority projects, how can we do those well and properly so that we can, referencing the Parks and Rec survey that we did earlier this year, like how can we tick as many boxes in the results from that survey, you know, maybe reassess it based on COVID and then, you know, put together a comprehensive, you know, master plan, shall we say, that we can actually refer to and work towards and know that, you know, we're all on the same page with. Because, you know, I think there's, all these projects have been. referencing the Parks and Rec Survey that we did earlier this year, like how can we tick as many boxes in the results from that survey, you know, maybe reassess it based on COVID and then, you know, put together a comprehensive, you know, master plan, shall we say, that we can actually refer to and work towards and know that, you know, we're all on the same page with. Because, you know, I think there's all these projects have been, have been identified, are great. They are not all the same level of priority. So I think let's have the discussion. And I thank Councilman Kelly for bringing this up because you're right, this is a discussion we absolutely have to have. And I think, you know, we have a lot of big decisions to make and we're going to have to prioritize and decide what's in the best interest of our town. So in short, although I approve, you know, I support the goal and objective here. I think, yeah, let's take the time to develop this further.
Mr. Uchufuza, did you have a question? I know Lynn's got a hand up as well.
Well, I'll just say that I agree that we aren't ready to vote on this motion. So I will not be seconding it. I think that we will be instructing our staff to focus on the prioritization and it is part of the comprehensive plan that we have a master plan for our parks and recreation and open space. So this is a project that we shouldn't that we need to do more study and analysis of, especially in light of the new challenges that COVID is throwing in front of us, both economic and structural, because we don't know what new things might be required to be built. So I won't be seconding this at this time, although I do in concept agree that we have to look at it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uchufuza. Mr. Katzen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to also thank Councilman Kelly for putting some thought into this and breaking forward the idea. I think it's important for, look, if COVID, if the COVID pandemic had not happened, we might have had this conversation six months ago. And we may be in a different, we might have been in a very different place, but we're not in that place right now. What I, what thought I do want to leave people with is to understand that to choose to do nothing for some of these things is still a choice. So for example, most prominently, to choose to not spend the $400,000 to put sprinklers in the senior center will mean that that facility will close. And so the, many of these things are, and many of the things in the Jacobs Report, are not cost items that we can choose to do or not without consequence. Our decisions have consequences and choosing to do nothing has consequences here, too. There's certainly no money for, in the budget for addressing the lack of sprinklers in the Portsmouth Multipurpose Senior Center. And my understanding is that building will close come around this time next year. So either we have a plan for that or we don't. But if we do nothing, that's our plan, too. Hopefully, we will get past the pandemic and be able to have a discussion about this. We are able to have a bond referendum at any time. We're not tied to November. Of course, there's no money in our budget for a special ballot referendum either, but just point of information, we can have, we can put a special referendum out at any time. And my recollection is the last time we had a open space bond, that that was at a special referendum, although it might have been in a November timeframe at an off year. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
I believe the last open space bond was on a November election. And I think that was 2007 when we did the $4 million to get part of the, you get the triple S properties and then
Right. You are correct. That was a special referendum, but we've done one since then that wasn't. You're right.
But I appreciate Mr. Kelly's list. Somewhat comprehensive on what we need to do. It's also part of our capital improvement plan, many of the projects. As you mentioned, Mr. Katzen, if not for COVID, we probably would, well, we've been doing some of these things. The beach house wouldn't have been cut out of the plan. But something had to go unfortunately, and that was one of them. There's some things on there that don't need to be done. If you look, the quality of life items, the wooden playground's already gone at Turnpike Avenue. Reconstruction of the playground behind cog show doesn't make sense until we know what we're doing with the cog show building. So there's a lot of things that, yeah, the most I pressing one would be the sprinklers. But at some point, we have to decide whether or not we're going to keep that building or move on with something else. For many years, I've been asking our congressman to see if he can allocate some money for us to build a new senior center. And he has readily admitted that we really need a new senior center, but has told me that he can't get any money out of the budget. So now, however, it's happened in Johnston and North Providence. Would like to see us to look at this more in conjunction with the overall capital improvement plan. Not just a wishlist or a list we're looking to do now. It's just not the appropriate time when we have two other major bonds that are floating in the background. We have a school bond that we don't know how much it's going to cost us and we have the potential for a community recreation center that be out there as well. And between those two items, we're looking at roughly $90 million. So throwing another $2 or $3 million on top of it may not be the best of idea. So I appreciate Andrew's work on this, Mr. Kelly's work on this, but I can't support it at this point in time just because it's not financially feasible at this point in time.
We do have some questions or comments for Mr. Uchufuza. We just got on you.
Yep. Now I've got it off. Can you hear me?
We got you.
All right. I had a lot to say on this. I'm going to forego most of it. Some of it's already been covered, but I would like to ask a few questions. Number one, does this, does the town still maintain its AAA bond rating?
Yes. Did you hear that, Mr. Uchufuza?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And I presume this is going to be a 20-year bond, although clearly we're not very far along in the planning.
That I can't answer. We've not talked to bond counsel about this.
Has the Assembly passed any legislation for this? This debt?
No, not, I mean, I think you've heard the discussion tonight. This hasn't gone any further than this discussion that we're having right now.
Okay, thank you. I think that's about it. I'll just make a general comment and that is that I agree with those that said we're not time to pile some more debt on. You know, we're going to have a very difficult year in all likelihood. I don't think anybody at this point knows what the new budget's going to look like coming out of the State Assembly. But it's not going to be kind to us, I don't think. So there's a lot of problems and we shouldn't be taking on debt at a time when we don't know what our financial future looks like. We have many demands that are going to come on to us. We also don't know how long this recession's going to last. Hopefully, it'll be short, but we don't know yet. So again, we have a pretty heavy tax burden that we passed on to the citizens. And adding debt to it is not a good idea. These bonds are not free. By my calculation, this is, we're in around about $160,000 onto the next budget that passes. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uchufuza. Okay. I don't see any more comments, questions. So we did have a motion. I get to receive a second. Is there a second? There's no second, so the motion stalls. Okay. Let's move on to correspondence. We have invited correspondence. We have motion.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Uchufuza?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. We have future meetings, as was mentioned tonight. Our next meeting is August 11th, which is Tuesday evening. Then we have August 24th, September 14th, and we added a special workshop on September 16th. Different future meetings.
Mr. President, move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Uchufuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. We will see you on the 11th.
Thank you, everyone.
Enjoy the summer and the heat.